Welcome, everyone, to the April 15th Carteret County Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd like to ask Commissioner Quinn to lead us in the pledge. I think I did that last month.
That's all right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and if I could ask Vice Chairman Mansfield to lead us into invocation tonight?
We'll all bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you today in humility and faith. We thank you for all you have given us and the many blessings in our lives. We ask for your guidance and strength. Show us the way and fill us with courage and wisdom. Help us to remember your love and grace and to be faithful in our service to you. Give us the patience and the understanding to face life's challenges with grace. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. All right. In accordance with the state government's Ethics Act, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the board this evening? If so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any undue participation in the particular matter involved. Well, good. All right, and then I'd like to remind everyone to please cut off or mute your cell phones. And our next item is going to be to adopt the agenda. Commissioner Wheatley wanted to make one, add one thing to that?
I was going to ask you to add the discussion of the Eastern Park, adding something to the signings down there. But I think it'd be, would work best if we just put it off and did it until the next month's meeting.
Like to add it to next month's agenda?
Correct.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Do I have a motion? Motion for adoption of the agenda?
So move.
Second. All right. First and second, everyone, please raise your right hand. All right, and then the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an amendment to the consent agenda. On item number five, there was a contract for the bid, and we don't have a budget limit yet for that one. So remove that one until next month's meeting.
All right, we're going to remove, this is asking to remove number five from the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And that's approved. We're now in for public comments, and our first speaker is going to be Mr. Robert Buckley. You'll just state your name and your address. Mr. Buckley, I'm going to hand out, he's got a handout that he asked everyone to get.
Good evening. My name is Robert Buckley. Live at 616 Island Road on Hockers Island. Those handouts that I gave you are actually something that I posted on Facebook after the last meeting. I'll make mention to it in my speech, but if I was to go over that here, you'd be shutting me down like real quick. So I appreciate if you take the time and read that at your convenience. So I just want to say, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and County Commissioners. Thanks for allowing me a moment to speak. After I watched the last meeting on TV, I was quite impressed by Sheriff, he's in the back there, Asa Buck's presentation as to why the raises were needed for the men and women of the sheriff's office. I support what he said 100%. I supported it so much that I went, after I saw the TV thing, I went right online and I wrote a letter. And I posted it. And I posted it on several groups throughout Carteret County, reaching approximately 25,000 residents. If you want to know what it is, I'll tell you what sites they are, but I don't want to advertise right here. The interesting thing was, there was nothing but extensive positive comments. There were likes, there were love emojis, there were the residents of Carteret County, not one person out of that 25,000 people indicated that the raises, raises were not warranted. The residents of Carteret County on those Facebook pages were fully supportive of the raises for the sheriff's office staff. I got many phone calls, text messages, and emails. So our residents do support the raises for the law enforcement in our county. Our correctional officers and our deputies are overworked and underpaid. Being a deputy or police officer was once a well-respected field to work in. Unfortunately, the world we live in today no longer feels that way. Police officers, deputies, correctional officers are demonized on social media, quite, social media quite frequently in 2024. Our deputies are being cherry picked, hired by other departments in a scheme known in the law enforcement community as police poaching. What does that mean? It's a scenario where other police agencies recruit your well-trained officers or deputies with the incentive of greater pay. The deputies that we are losing are often seasoned deputies who have much institutional knowledge. And when they relocate to other police agencies, they take their knowledge with them to their new employer. The new police department they go to does not have to pay to send these deputies to the mandated training that they need to become a police officer. You know why? Because Carteret County, us, the taxpayers, we paid that bill for them already. I am respectfully requesting that the Commissioners of Carteret County grant Sheriff Asa Buck's request to implement the requested raises that the sheriff requested. I know that he had said something about, he had all the money for 2024 in his budget. It'd be nice if you retroactively did that, because it's not going to impact your budget this year. And going forward, it was going to be approximately, I think, $640,000 a year, and I'm getting right towards the end. We should take pride in our sheriff's office staff and pay them accordingly. They are diligent, professional, and well-trained. The only way to stop police poaching is to raise the salaries if you want to retain your staff and maintain good morale in the sheriff's office. You need to pay the sheriff's staff, like other police agencies, in the immediate vicinity. Let's keep our deputies in Carteret County. And real quickly, if you don't mind, the annual salary going forward after this year would be $640,000 a year, approximately. And I did some, I went to the census. We got 52,199 housing units in Carteret County. That's $12 a housing unit. If you break it down to people, residents, we got 69,615 residents. That's $9 a year per resident. I think that's a cheap price to keep our county safe and secure. And last but not least, I want to acknowledge the board and tell you, any government I've been involved with, it's not only the board that is doing all the hard work, but it's the people you hire, the people under you, the attorneys, the budget directors, economic development. I want to say that I noticed you hired Sharon Griffith, S.Y., she's right over here. She's, she's got a great background, and I want to commend you for hiring her. And also Rod Kirk to oversee economic development. Thank you very much, and please consider giving the raises to the sheriff's office and the staff. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley.
We did not even start the timer on you for the first three minutes.
I got no pink hair.
Thank you, sir.
You're sounding more like a Hockers owner all the time.
Yeah, born and bred, Hockers Island. By the way, I've been in law enforcement 30 years. I know a lot about this. If you ever want some insight, I've made a lot of increases, I'd like to help you out with a lot of this, but I don't want to get into that right now here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Brian Nicolo.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brian Nicolo, 1502 Salter Path Road. Let me throw some numbers at you here real quick. Follow you, sir, and I support what you're doing and speaking up for the sheriff's department.
Thank you.
But a DS 200 purchase, 212,000. Express vote computer, 124,000. Equipment maintenance, 36,000. Equipment storage, 17,000. Rental vehicles, drivers, 7,000. These are some costs associated with your DS 200 voting equipment, voting computers. And as you know, I come up here and I speak on a few things each, each month. And those being my opposition against use of voting computers in the Carteret County voting process. And then also talk about our issues regarding human trafficking, which is in every county in our country right now, especially due to the open borders, and then our J-6er issues and their plight as hostages in our federal prisons right now. But let me go back to our voting equipment. Our voting equipment is vulnerable. It is, our DS 200s produced by the E.S.N.S. company. And these companies have a relationship with each other. For example, Dominion Voting Machine is another voting computer system based out of Toronto, Canada. And you know who else shares the same building with our Dominion Voting Systems? A company called Open Borders, ran by Soros. And I think we all know who George Soros is. Isn't that kind of funny? And all these voting equipment, they're all related to each other, and they go back decades. Matter of fact, I read a book called Vote Scam about a vote, a vote that happened in Florida, 1970. And a book was written and published in 1992, and it parallels the same battle we fought after the 2020 election. So voting manipulation is nothing new. And my, my position here tonight is not to tell you to believe what I'm saying. My position is to research what I'm saying, especially elected officials. We had an expert come in from out of town, flown in, and he presented a very compelling evidence as to how voting systems can be manipulated and are vulnerable. So, and one commissioner showed up, which I appreciate, but I wonder why others did. Maybe you had some, maybe you're doing your own research, and I appreciate it. But I really think actions speak loud, and you do. And after the meeting last month, somebody, after I spoke, to ask who that person was, and I should have just said, my name's Patriot, because I'm one of 1,000 people speaking across the country at every, every county in our country. And there are county commissioners who are banning these voting machines. But I will tell you this, you do have the power, you do have the authority. You need to dig into what I'm saying, not because of me, not because I'm a loud voice, but because maybe there's something that the people are saying that is factual. And we talked about this, where everything that was once a conspiracy is now becoming the truth. You see what I'm saying? So what can you do? I ask you to dig into it. Somebody told me the other day, we had a little meeting, and they said, Brian, why don't you write up a proposal? Why don't you write down the resolution? And I said, you know, you're right. I got to do the work, too. I only work a little bit throughout the week, which is a lot. But I'll, I'll find time to write you up a resolution. I'll break it down Barney-style and present it to you. Maybe get some citizen signatures behind it and see what we can do for Carteret County. And finishing up, please, we should at least have a backup plan without the voting machines. We should have written procedures for paper ballots, processes in county. We can count them at the precinct level. It would not cost us any more to count by hand our paper ballots. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. And our next speaker is Barbara Smith. You'll just state your name and address, please, Barbara.
My name is Barbara Smith, and I'm at 229 Hickory Shores Drive in Newport. Yes, I'm speaking about the election as well, with the election integrity. We, you're lucky, I'm the last one speaking on that, because we had two others coming, but things happen. At the March 18th Board of Commissioners meeting during public comments, a gentleman spoke about election integrity with his concern about backup coverage in case of a cyber attack or power outage, as well as J-6 situation. He is very passionate about these topics, as a lot of others in this room are. One of the commissioners stated that maybe it would be a good idea to refer his concerns to the higher-ups, such as Norm Sanderson and Celeste Carnes. There are several different groups in this county alone, as well as our state, that are constantly keeping an eye on different things going on in Raleigh, and we have made a difference on several different items. We came to the conclusion a couple of years ago, the only way we can move forward is to start on a county and/or city level. So here we are. We follow up with legislature on a state level, making necessary phone calls to let our voices be heard, sending emails about election laws, insurance increases per your request, education issues, and medical freedom. We are also making our voices heard on a local level at the Board of Elections, Board of Commissioners, and the Board of Education. I've learned a lot in the last three years. We, the people, do not like what we see going on in our county, state, or country. On March 21st, I sent an email inviting each of you to an event to meet Professor David Clements and preview his documentary of Let My People Go. And just so you know, this is the fifth election analyst expert we have had in this county, and we have invited elected officials and public, too. A group of Carteret County citizens have heard this gentleman speak on numerous occasions, in person as well as Zoom and podcasts. Thank you, Commissioner Chadwick, for attending. It meant a lot to me that you were there. Over 100 people were in attendance. They, too, are at a loss as to what else to do or where do we go from here. Thus far to date, the interaction of the ones I have personally spoken to have informed me that they knew something wasn't right, and now they can see how election fraud can happen. This is not the first time that we have invited our elected officials to other events. At one event, two other commissioners attended, and their response was, yes, I believe in fraud happened in 2020. And they listed a couple of other elections as well, but they felt this cannot be fixed in my lifetime. Well, what about our children, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren? Do they not deserve freedom as well? When we bring these people in for these events, we make sure, can I finish? We make sure our information is correct. These people have been thoroughly investigated, researched, and vetted. Do I believe Carteret County Board of Elections are derelict in their duty? No, I do not. They only know and do what is passed down from the State Board of Elections. I truly believe you gentlemen could be very instrumental in assisting with these elections. After all, you gentlemen approve all the budgets, including the costly voting machines. I already know that 90,000 was spent on the municipal election in November. That's just the municipal. Since then, we have had a primary and now facing a runoff on two positions for May 14th, as well as the general election in November. I sincerely believe we can do this a lot cheaper, and we need your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
I am leaving y'all with this. If you will pass, there is some extra information behind it as well. And if any of you gentlemen want to borrow this, I'll be glad to allow you my pocket.
Okay. All right, and our next item on the list is the presentation of the annual report from Trillium, Miss Cecilia Peers.
Thank you so much for having us in this evening. And before I get started, I'm going to give you all paper copies.
All right.
Thank you so much, Chairman Farrington and Commissioners. We appreciate you all having us in this evening. My name is Cecilia Peers. I am the Southern Regional Vice President with Trillium Health Resources. I appreciate Commissioner Farrington's service on our regional advisory board. And also Lee Wolf, who's part of our Carteret Hospital System, has been serving on our advisory board as well. So just want to acknowledge Carteret County's commitment to our governance and our involvement with providing mental health and substance use and developmental disability services to Carteret County. I also want to recognize Victoria Jackson. She is our South Central Regional Vice President, and I'll tell you a little bit about some of the shifting roles that we have as part of our consolidation efforts recently and our readiness for a tailored plan. So Trillium covers services and supports for people with Medicaid who have the most significant mental health, substance use, and intellectual and developmental disabilities. Last year, when we had a 28-county catchment area, we served approximately 43,000 individuals. And you'll see the breakdown in terms of disability group with mental health, substance use, and intellectual and developmental disabilities. And the total value of services that Trillium spent for our entire catchment area was a little bit over $650 million. As you can see, we have a smaller population than other Medicaid health plans, but due to the more significant needs of our members, the services that we provide are in addition to what other Medicaid health plans cover and can sometimes be more expensive and costly. So our efforts really are to provide community-based services to our members to try to help with stability and keep people out of high-cost crisis utilization. So the state has been undergoing a Medicaid transformation process for a while. Medicaid transformation is the move to bring physical and behavioral health networks together under each Medicaid health plan. That launched for low-to-moderate-needs members with the standard plans in July of 2021. Local management entities and managed care organizations were supposed to transition to this model July 1st of 2022, and that has been delayed several times. Other LME MCOs in other parts of the state had some struggles with meeting the readiness requirements that the state had. And the state has required that all tailored plans must be ready to go live at the same time. So recently, with the last budget legislation, the General Assembly took some action steps to prepare LME MCOs to go live with the tailored plans. One of those changes was to reduce the number of LME MCOs down from six to either four or five. And then to also increase the minimum population of each LME MCO up to 1.5 million. And that was really to help with the financial risk that we will incur once we start covering physical health needs along with behavioral health needs. And then that legislation also established a new launch, launch date for tailored plans of July 1st of 2024. That legislation put the process of reducing the number of LME MCOs into the hands of DHH Secretary Kinsley. And so he issued a secretarial directive on November 1st, and that included a couple of different action steps. It required the Sandhills LME MCO to dissolve and become part of East Point. And then as part of that consolidation process, Trillium and East Point LME MCOs would combine into one single consolidated organization covering 46 counties. Because the timeline for this process was very, very short, for, we're talking from November 1st to February 1st of the next year, there had to be a surviving entity. So rather than try to create a new entity, Trillium became that surviving entity, now covering 46 counties. Through the process of consolidation, which really started with the secretary's approval of our consolidation agreement with East Point, we had about 45 days to bring our two organizations together to make sure that our network was adequate to cover all of the new members that we would be serving in those additional 18 counties and to onboard any legacy staff from East Point and Sandhills that wanted to continue to work with our organization. So we are still in the process of working through that consolidation, but we began to serve members of all of those counties on February 1st of 2024. With, in no small part due to the hard work of our staff. Our staff now number around 1,400 individuals. And we also have, we onboarded approximately 900 new providers into our network or expanded the contracts for providers that we already had arrangements with so that our members could continue receiving the services they were receiving prior to this consolidation process. And all of this was really with the goal of bringing all of the LME MCOs up to tailored plan readiness. So one of the pieces of Trillium's governance structure has been regional boards that, that feed up to a governing board. When we expanded from 28 counties to 46 counties, we wanted to continue with that regional governance structure, but we realized that we needed some more regions. So we now have five regions. And one change that, that is part of that regional structure is that Carteret County will now be part of our South Central Region. We created a new South Central Region as part of the expansion. And so Carteret County is, is included with Onslow County, Pender, Jones, Craven, Sampson, Wayne, and Lenore. So we have some legacy East Point counties and some legacy Trillium counties in that, in that new region. I am the Southern Regional Vice President, so I've been your representative with Trillium for a while, and now Victoria Jackson will, will be your Regional Vice President, representing Trillium and, and your primary contact and liaison for anything that your members might need here. And just a reminder, our regional boards have a commissioner and a non-commissioner representative for each county. And that gives an equal voice at the regional advisory board level for each county, which we feel is important. There's also a consumer and family advisory committee member that's part of each regional board. And so that provides each regional board with the voice from our members or the individuals that support them. The way our governance structure is designed is that the regional boards will appoint members up to our governing board. That changed slightly with the consolidation. So as part of the consolidation agreement, East Point brought in 11 governing board members to our governing board. Right now, the representation doesn't exactly line up with the structure that we have established. And so over time, as folks' terms end, we hope to resume the regular structure where governing board, regional board members will appoint representatives, commissioner representatives, non-commissioner representatives, and consumer and family advisory committee members up to the governing board, the way we have our bylaws structured right now. And so you can see some of the numbers in terms of our expanded service population now that we're serving 46 counties. So again, this is all with the goal of us going live as a tailored plan July 1st of 2024. So the tailored plan really aligns the physical health network and the behavioral health network together so our members can be served as a whole person by their health plan. So that includes pharmacy benefits and also includes non-emergency Medicaid transportation. And just a reminder, tailored plans are the only fully public health plan, and we have the most local involvement and local oversight of our organization. And that's really necessary because our members have those highest needs. There's lots of coordination we do among health departments, DSS, the sheriff's office. And so it's really important that we remain connected to the public and connected to county leadership. Another key piece of tailored plan is tailored care management. That's a year-round service for many of the tailored plan members that helps oversee a care plan so that our members are connecting to both their physical and behavioral health service needs and that their personal health goals and their needs are being met by a care management team and by the providers that are part of our network. Care management can be provided both by Trillium and the other LME MCOs, as well as by independent providers, and that's really based on member choice. Part of our approach to care management has been to develop some specialty teams around populations that require some more intense services and a little more hand-holding to make sure they get their needs met. So we have a Trillium Support Transition and Reentry Team that's focused on individual So we have a Trillium Support Transition and Reentry Team that's focused on individuals returning from jail and from prison, trying to get them connected to Medicaid, to services, to treatment, things that they need that might not be available in full while they are in jail or prison. We have a Rapid Access Care Coordination Team that works very closely when kids are either in an emergency department or taken into DSS custody, works closely with those organizations to help support kids to get to a service setting that's most appropriate for them. And then we are also building out a foster care management team so that we have care managers that are specific to the foster care population, working closely with DSS when a child is in foster care. So the focus with care management is really on whole-person care, and we have some population health initiatives that will be part of our tailored care management with a focus on high-risk mothers, prenatal and post-delivery, looking at how we can improve smoking cessation efforts of our members, helping them manage chronic conditions, and providing healthy eating and healthy lifestyle education. So just wanted to provide you with some project updates, things that have been happening around the region over the last year. So we've hosted a series of summits on Latino health, African-American health, and we have a Native American Health Summit coming up this weekend on Saturday in Lumberton. We offered a series of grants called Family Solutions. We've seen a decrease since COVID of foster care homes that kids can access when they enter the foster care system, and so those grants were to help recruit foster families and also to improve the network of kinship foster care supports. So when a kid goes into foster care, has the potential to go into foster care, maybe some extended family or friends of the family can support that child, and they can be with people who they're comfortable with, and that gives more stability in their lives. So we granted funds to Easter Seals to help with that effort. We've hosted a series of reentry simulations, trying to give the community an idea of what it's like as a person reentering from jail or prison, in terms of the experience they have, barriers to meeting expectations around probation or parole, finding housing, finding employment, and so on, so that we can improve our system of supporting those folks so they do not go back into the jail or prison system. And of course, we worked closely with New Hanover County to open the Healing Place. It's been in operation for about a year now. While it's not in Carteret County, folks throughout our catchment area can access the Healing Place, and that's 200 beds of peer-run detox and peer-led recovery in New Hanover County, so folks can access that service as needed. Couple more project updates. We have worked with State Department of Health and Human Services on a recovery app through CHESS Health. So if you use apps on your phone for different services or different ways of tracking on things, that's available for folks in recovery to help with their recovery efforts. That can help them track a recovery plan, find out where AA or NA meetings are close to them, receive peer support and reminders for things that are important to them around their recovery efforts. And that can really be a great ongoing reminder that their goal is to get clean and stay clean and be part of a recovery community. Back at home, North Carolina is our housing program. We received a little bit over $2 million in funding for permanent supportive housing and some rapid rehousing throughout our region, and so if Trillium members are precariously housed or homeless and in need of support, I would encourage you to refer them to us because we have housing support available. That's a really important key piece of stability that's outside of the Medicaid or state-funded service system, but it can help people avoid crisis and help with long-term stability and maintenance of treatment efforts. I was talking to Sheriff Buck a little bit earlier before the meeting about our naloxone distribution. We provided over 200 kits of naloxone to the sheriff's office, and I know that they've shared that with other local departments as needed, and so we do that every year to try to help reduce overdose deaths in the county. One community is our outreach arm, and so they provide a presence at events and other activities in the community to make sure that our members know what services are available and how to access care, which is really important. When people need services, they usually need them right away, and they need to know how to access them. So just a few numbers in terms of services directly here in the county. In the last fiscal year, we served a little bit over 2,000 unique individuals. We had a little bit over 1,500 individuals receiving services for mental health, 1,200 for substance use, and a little bit over 500 for intellectual and developmental disability. There is some overlap in those groups because of co-occurring disorders, and also the value of those services amounted to a little bit over $23 million. So that's the end of my presentation. I do, it's not in the slides, so I just want to remind everyone, if you are experiencing a behavioral health crisis or you think you need to access services through Trillium, our member and recipient service line number is 877-685-2415. I see some folks writing, so I'm gonna wait. And then our website is trilliumhealthresources.org, and our member, we have lots of member information, our provider directory, community trainings, and other information is on there as well. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
I just want to make a comment. Well, thank you for helping Carteret County for the several years you've been helping us. I think you helped Commissioner Wheatley and I on a couple of projects that were kind of going down the tubes, and I want to welcome Victoria, Victoria Jackson. One of the things that I will say, and I know this is the state kind of trying to get all this set up and that type of thing, but as you could see from the back page, the 1,555 mental health, like you said, there is some overlap there, substance abuse and intellectual development disabilities. There is some concern that I've heard that the CFAC, which is the Consumer Family Advisory Committee, they played a vital role with the county for several years, and since all this stuff started shifting around, and I will tell you that they don't feel like they're being represented, and you and I understand why, and Victoria understands why, because that is set up into the system. So hopefully, I just want to make that point, we really want to make sure those people get in that system because they're the people living it every day. You know, a lot of people, well, I shouldn't, I'll say this, I look at Trillium and probably one of the most things that I relate it to is substance abuse and what we're going through with all the different things that are happening in our world today, but there's a lot, there's a lot more going on, and these services are very expensive, and they're very needed because there's no other opportunity for these folks. So all I say is, from Carteret County, we just send the word to the big board that we want our CFAC members represented. That's my opinion, because they're the ones living it every day, and they should have a say. And I think the state has set it up that way, so hopefully that will all follow through like it's supposed to.
We worked with the state to set up that governance structure where CFAC members were a part of the governing board at essentially 25%. And so with the transition that has shifted a little bit, and we are hoping it shifts back, but I will say that one of the CFAC representatives from Carteret County did speak at our governing board last month. That's one of the great things that CFACs do, is advocate both to our board and to the state around what they hope to see for members, and so that voice was clearly heard at our governing board last month.
That's great. Thank you, Cecilia. Thank you, Victoria. We'll be working with you. All right, and our next item is number seven. It's a continued discussion. We're gonna have Tommy Byrne speak on this in reference to our public safety pay increases.
Thank you, Commissioners. First of all, thank you for allowing us the time and the resources to address this issue. Sheriff Buck and I and Mr. Ray from Merchant Services have spent several meetings together, as well as some of you, and welcome jury input, to try and come up with a way to address some of the market concerns that we have regarding the ongoing market demands for trained police officers, and with those demands comes needs for increased salaries, and it doesn't just stop there, it's across all of our public safety agencies and our first responders in the county. So we have taken a holistic approach to our county's needs and looked at both our sheriff's criminal divisions and civil divisions, our detention officers, as well as our 911 telecommunications, who are also a vital first responder in this. And so what we have come up with, next slide please, is a way to accomplish several things that you had asked us to look at. One was to continue to provide market-competitive salaries, and two was to look at and focus on entry-level starting salaries. So what we would like to recommend is the following. Full-time sworn deputy positions in grade 68 and below would receive a $4,500 increase to base salary as of April 2024, excluding the detectives who received increases earlier this year at the request of Sheriff Buck. Two, entry-level starting salaries will be set at $49,000 for Deputy Sheriff. Any employee currently falling under this salary amount would receive the $4,500 increase or the amount needed to increase the entry-level salary to $49,000, whichever is greater. And that's substantially more than is now, and it's more than the sheriff requested in his initial request. And then finally, for the criminal and civil divisions, sworn deputy positions grade 69 and above, including the sheriff, would receive a $3,000 increase in base salary. Moving to the next slide regarding Fund 4314, which is our detention center. All detention center staff housed in this fund as of March 2024 would receive a $4,000 increase to their base salary. The entry-level salary for detention officers going forward would be set at $44,000 based on the established pay periods, which are 26 pay periods a year. Any employee currently falling under this amount would receive the $4,000 increase or the amount needed to increase the salary to the entry-level salary of $44,000, whichever is greater. Anytime we present numbers and figures like this to you, we always try to provide a fiscal impact, and the next slide will show you the remaining fiscal, actually, I think the slide's a little out of order. The remaining fiscal year impact with the five pay periods remaining, one, the Sheriff's Division, that impact would be $66,800 for the remainder of the year. The Detention Division would be $94,000 for the remainder of the year, and the total fiscal year impact of this fiscal year would be $161,000. The cumulative impact for fiscal year '25 would be $532,000. That represents salaries of $410 and benefits of $122, and those are just for sheriff's positions. The current fiscal impact, as the sheriff mentioned previously, would be covered by lapsed salaries within his department due to vacancies. Moving to Fund 4350, which is our consolidated communications fund, all 911 telecommunications we recommend would receive a $4,000 increase to base salary. The entry-level starting salary shall be set at no less than $44,000, and any employee falling below this entry-level amount of the $4,000 increase would receive the amount, whichever is greater, the amount needed to increase the salary of $44,000. The fiscal impact to communications for the remaining fiscal year would be $24,000, estimated salaries of $18,700 and benefits of $5,300, and that's assuming five existing pay periods remain. The full impact for fiscal year '25 for communications would be $122,000. That's $97,000 in salaries and $25,000 in benefits. Additional considerations that we'd like to share with you, the funds are available in the current year based on lapsed salaries from the vacancies that all of these divisions have experienced. And then the last recommendation in considering this is the recommendation to do a full pay study for all employees in the next year, which would be, I think our last pay study we figured was completed in 2012, where we did a comprehensive study. So those are our recommendations based on our meetings and trying to build our consensus around this issue, and I do appreciate Sheriff Buck and Mr. Ray and those of you that offered input in trying to resolve this issue because it's a continuing problem across all public safety agencies, and the gentleman that spoke tonight is absolutely right, the poaching goes on all the time, and anything we feel we can do to position ourselves to have a competitive advantage, I think we need to realize that because we have a dedicated group of first responders here, from the call takers and 911 directors to the deputies on the calls, to the detention officers that are taking care of things in the facility. So we will recommend that, happy to answer any questions that you may have, and we appreciate you giving us the time and opportunity to work through this.
Thank you, Tommy, and Dee, and Sheriff Stephen. Is there any comments or recommendations on?
I got one, Mr. Chairman. Tommy, what was the detention officer pay before it went to the 44?
Danny, you correct me if I'm wrong, it was around $39,000 to $40,000.
I think it was paid right at 37.
I think I got it right here.
Any other questions, comments?
$36,800 on the detention officer.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the manager's proposed presentation and to adopt these things at this meeting.
Second. We got a first and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, that's unanimous. Thanks again for working on that. And Tommy, you're up for item number eight, manager's.
All right, thanks, sir. Just one thing I'd note to pass along to you, April 27th is our Chargers of Freedom dedication, be here on the courthouse lawn. This has been a project for about three years in the making, four years in the making, and if you haven't been by the display, the Bill of Rights, the U.S. Constitution, and the Declaration of Independence are out there on display. The Chargers of Freedom Group has done this in a number of counties to provide an onsite educational experience for the community and in particular for students, and that event on the 27th will start at 11:00 a.m. I know we've got some other events going on in the county that day as well, but I wanted to mention it to you all and to the public, everyone's invited to attend, and I think it'd be a good ceremony where you'll hear some presentations about the historical context of these documents and what the founding fathers envisioned when they developed these documents, some of their thought processes and some of their religious fervor that had an influence on these documents, and how they've sustained themselves over the last, since 1776 and later. So I did want, I told the Chargers of Freedom folks, we would be sure to make everybody aware, they've put some flyers up around the community and posters, and they've marketed the event and publicized it, and it should be a good event. It'll also coincide with the Beaufort Farmers Market, and they're excited about joining those two events. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, our next item is appointments, and we only have one, well, we have two, but one for the Harbor Authority.
I'll make a motion, we reappoint Richard Gilliken and Charles Dean Smith.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, that's done. And now we're down to the Commissioners' comments. Who did I pick last time? Who wants to go first?
I was the last last time. Or it was first last time.
First last time? Okay.
Thank you very much for all of the citizens that came out and spoke tonight. Always appreciate hearing from the public. I always appreciate hearing from the public. I've had the appropriate time here. Also want to take the time to thank Mr. Burns and Ms. Meeshaw, Sheriff Buck, Mr. Ray, for putting together that comprehensive plan for those much-needed salary increases. I'm very pleased and happy and proud of that. Been getting a lot of emails, a lot of calls about the student resource officer at White Oak Elementary. I want to thank the concerned parents that came out to the Cape Carteret Town Council meeting to express their disappointment with the town council no longer supporting the student resource officer at White Oak Elementary School. I also want to thank Mr. Gray Rixey. He is a local boy here, and he works on the staff of Senator Tom Tillis. And he reached out to me last week, said this has been flagged as a priority in Senator Tillis's office. And he and I are gonna be working together to come up with some federal funding to help provide the necessary funding for this SRO position. So I'm very thankful for that, thankful for Senator Tillis having the staff taking the time to reach out to us. Finally, the Charter of Freedom event, really right up my alley, being a history professor out at the college. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend because I will be on Portsmouth Island. Portsmouth Island, we have a homecoming event there every two years, and it's open to the public. A couple of us up here, it's a homecoming event for us because we got people in the ground on Portsmouth Island. The Salter family, that my grandmother was part of, I'm part of. Mr. Chadwick's part of. My grandmother was the last living person born on Portsmouth Island. And so the island was founded in 1753 and taken over by the State Parks Department in 1971, and now it's part of the National Seashore. Every two years, we have a homecoming. This year, we're commemorating the 130th anniversary of the life-saving station there, a life-saving service predated the Coast Guard. And this is gonna be a great presentation. I invite everybody to come out, hope for some good weather, bring any skeeter spray if you can. We have dinner on the ground, we have singing at the church, we have a presentation about the history of Portsmouth and the honor of the families that are the descendants we're representing there. So come on out, take your private boat there, you can catch a small ferry from Opaquio. Or come out to Portsmouth Island and come the April 27th. That's all I can say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Chadwick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tommy, I would like to clarify, the pay study is gonna be for all the county employees, not just the sheriff's office. So we are looking at all our county employees for a much-needed increase in compensation. I would like to take a moment to recognize Ms. Sharon Griffin, our new county attorney. Had the opportunity to work with you on a couple of county issues so far, and she's a ball of fire, and she gets right to the point. So welcome, welcome here. Commissioner Wheatley mentioned about renaming the Eastern Park to the Eastern Blues Park. Joe Boy Willis and a couple of people have called me, and we do have them on the agenda next month, May. And I've also put them in contact with the Coors Sound Water File Museum to write up a nice plaque honoring the Eastern Blues, who I'm told was the most winningest baseball team, I don't know the county, but certainly down east. So certainly that'll be much noted. I think they gave about $20,000 when Eastern Park was built, when the county first acquired the land. The election integrity folks, I attended a meeting, very informative. While I stand by, our county folks are doing a great job. I'm sure there are some counties in North Carolina that maybe that is not the case, and that was a lot of information and very eye-opening event, and was very well attended by probably 100, 125 people there. So that's certainly something that warrants keeping on top of. The issue with the school resource officer in Cape Carteret, I've gotten a couple of phone calls on that. I do stand by my statement that that is a sole responsibility of the Cape Carteret Police Department because they are a town, and we do provide a majority of the funds, the county and the state grant, and Emerald Isle, and each town in that area pays their fair share. And we also have offered more money. So it's not a money issue, it's not a liability issue. I think it's a jurisdictional issue and possibly an ego issue with some people. So I think that responsibility, if you're gonna be a town and you're gonna have your own police department, you need to protect your whole town with that police department. So certainly, I hope the light shines in the back of the room on that, and those children are not left unprotected. And that's about all I have to say, Mr. Chairman. Thank everybody for coming out.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Wheatley?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to keep my remarks short to go along with the rest of the meeting. Thank everybody for coming out. I agree with the comments made about the SRO as far as the renaming of the park as Smyrna. What I'd like to do is add to the name of the park rather than change it, but Smyrna Park under the Eastern Blues, that was a very important baseball team, and it's very important to the people from Betty to Cedar Island. And they've made numerous calls to me as well as the other people to get that done. I'd love to see it get that done, and we'll deal with that next month. Thank y'all for coming out. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Shen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief as well. Thank everybody for coming out, and I will concur with the comments that have been made by the other Commissioners. And I just, to add support to this board for the SRO issue, I feel like it's a town issue, and I would encourage the parents and the citizens in Cape Carteret to pressure and talk with all their Commissioners down in Cape Carteret to continue that service. I think it's, it's set a bad precedent to put that responsibility on the county because they're not the only school, they're not the only town that supports an SRO. So if, you know, I just feel like it need to be said, stated, and I just feel like it's their responsibility and they need to maintain that going forward. And as the sheriff has stated previously, he's having a hard time staffing his own department, so we certainly don't need to task him with even more responsibility. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
I'll continue the theme and reiterate all the comments made prior to right now. I would like to also welcome Sharon and Ron to our team. Hope you guys will enjoy being in Carteret County as much as all of us sitting up here do. Happy for all the things that have happened at the meeting tonight. Hope everybody had a great Easter and wish you a happy spring, and look forward to seeing you next month. Thank you.
All right. And I just want to thank Cecilia and Victoria for coming tonight. And as you can see, we don't wear it with a badge of honor, but when COVID hit and everybody, every day showed the facts about who was dying and who was suffering, well, we have an unbelievable port team, port overdose response team. Very proud of them, very proud of our sheriff's department and our many things that we do in the county to try to help people. So look forward to working with you guys.
Forgot one thing.
All right, Tommy?
If I don't mention this, I'll be in trouble. This week is National Telecommunicator Week, and every day this week, we've had different agencies bring things into the 911 center, meals, and just other, you know, expressions of support for our communicators. And I think sometimes in the first responder world, they're forgotten about at times because nobody sees them. They're in a building, and they work 12 hours by themselves with, you know, a group of five or six other people. And I would be remiss if I didn't recognize that it was National Telecommunicator Week this week.
Definitely. Thank you for mentioning that. Can we send over a meal to them from the Commissioners?
We can.
I'll take care of that for us.
If I kind of love to ship, you can fly for a job.
That's right. We won't do it in front of everybody, but we'll twist everybody's arm in the back room and see if we can get some meals sent over there this week. I also wanted to welcome Sharon and Ron to the county. Looking forward to working with you. And again, just thank you, everybody in the county that works for us. We're an awesome county, and we're very blessed, and we're very, I know, working with these Commissioners up here, each and every one of us is very appreciative, and they realize who works for the county and what they do. And I just want to mention one thing about the voting machines and that type of thing. As soon as Barbara and everyone came in the last time, or when you guys came in as a group, I did do my homework. I called the Board of Elections in Carteret County and spoke to Jessica, is that right? Is that, is that right?
Caitlin.
Caitlin, sorry. I apologize, Caitlin.
You can talk.
She lives in Emerald Isle, too. Sorry about that. But, you know, one of the things about that that I learned is it's not necessarily what's happening in Carteret County, it's to just get an understanding of what could happen in Jones County, or Onzo County, or any county, or any state. And I ask people to check into it and look at, at least peace of mind, know that, how this whole system works. So I appreciate you coming in and keeping us updated, and we really appreciate it. I wish I would have been at that meeting. Other than that, I think we're done. So we were gonna have to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11 for the committed purpose of discussing A1 approval and A3 attorney-client approvals.
All right. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. Thanks, everybody, for coming out.